Public Planning Commission. The meeting is now called or ordered. I will invite everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal
Thank you. By way of introduction, to my immediate left is Dr. Carol Horton, representing the Port Royal District. I am Bob Schwartz, representing Bowling Green District. To my immediate right is Mr. J D Young, our vice chair, representing Reedy Church. To his right is Mr. George Weber, representing the Madison District. And to his right is Mr. Richard Williams, representing Western Carolina. At the table at the foot of the stage is Mr. Craig Pennington, our county planner. Uh, seated behind him is Mr. Leon Hughes, the Director of Planning and Community Development. To his left is Mr. Craig Pennington, our county attorney. And to his right is, and I don't, what did I say? Congratulations, Mr. Pennington. Uh, I'll, I'll alter that to Mr. Chris McKenzie, I apologize. We've, we've got a few changes going on up here. As there will be several public hearings tonight, I'd like to call upon Mr. Pennington to read the public hearing protocol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Purpose of a public hearing is for Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression, imposition, and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 15 minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. All comments are to be pertinent to the issue being considered. Persons speaking at the public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes from our March 28th and April 25th, 2024 meetings. Have you had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, are there any additions or corrections? There being no additions or corrections, we will require a separate vote for each. Is there a motion regarding the March 28th meeting?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented and to be documented, um, uh, to the board.
Motion by Mr. Young, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. Any further discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, regarding the April 25th, 2024 minutes. Have you had a chance to review those, and if so, are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding the April 25th minutes?
I'd make that motion, sir, till we approve these minutes as submitted to us.
Motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and motion carries, and minutes are accepted and approved as submitted. Give me just a second here, if you would. Commissioners, if there be no objection, we will make a slight change to the agenda. You're good? Correction. Delete the changing of the agenda. Mr. Hughes, I'm sorry, uh, yes, sir, Mr. Hughes, regarding CA 03, 2024.
Thank you. One more. So, good evening, Mr. Chairmen of the Commission. This is a public hearing on a potential expansion of the Carmel Church Growth Area for the purpose of including additional acreage with the future land use designation of Plan Innovation Research and Technology Park, or P I R T, PERT. The PERT land use designation was added to the future land use map of the Conference of Plan at the end of 2023, when the Board approved the designation of two areas of the county. Um, the Madam Mead area in the northern portion of the county on Route 606, and then the area we are discussing tonight, uh, in the northeast portion of the Carmel Church Growth Area. In late 2023, the Caroline County Board of Supervisors amended the comprehensive plan and designated this growth area for the development of technology-based industries, specifically data center uses and the ancillary uses that support and accompany this industry. The existing area is comprised of 1,466 acres in the northeast section of the Carmel Church Growth Area. The area was identified as being appropriate for this designation because of the existing infrastructure to support data centers with existing power lines and the proximity to the water and wastewater facilities of the county. There are industrial land uses in several parcels in this area that are currently zoned for industrial use, and the area is not densely populated with residential uses. When designated the PERT areas, the county recognized the issues that other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth and around the country were having with incompatible data center uses being developed near existing and planned residential uses. To prevent these conflicts, Caroline amended the comprehensive plan to accommodate data center uses in areas where they will have minimal negative impact because of the large amount of undeveloped acreage in these areas with available infrastructure. In addition, the county adopted the PERT zoning classification with a PERT ordinance. The companion zoning designation is the PERT zoning district, is in Article 11 of the Plan Unit Development Section of the Zoning Ordinance. The PERT zoning ordinance has standards for the built environment for data center campuses. The ordinance incorporates submission development standards that are intended to further mitigate impacts of data centers with significant setbacks, landscaping, screening, buffering, design, noise, and environmental protection requirements. The current port PERT ordinance incorporates standards and requirements that are encouraged by environmental advocacy groups that monitor data center development. This is an image of the county's current future land use map with the current PERT areas outlined in red. The area being discussed tonight is the Carmel Church Growth Area in the center of the slide in the red. This area here. The white area is the area of the proposed expansion and is currently designated as rural preservation. Rural preservation is the largest designation on the future land use map. The comp plan language notes that these areas should have low-density residential development with less intensive agricultural uses and should serve as a buffer between areas planned for intensive agricultural uses and other land use categories. The current comprehensive plan was adopted in 2010 with the goal of guiding growth in the county for 20 years to the horizon year of 2030. The county has been a strong comprehensive plan community during this period. Being a strong comprehensive plan community does not mean that the plan should not change until it reaches its horizon year. The comprehensive plan is a living document that is intended to be adjusted as communities, uh, evolve organically or when circumstances arise that benefit the community. In the case of this proposed expansion, the evolution of technology, the availability of infrastructure in this area, the current industrial development pattern, and the success of the county in attracting commercial and industrial development, along with the county wanting to continue to develop in the most appropriate areas, those areas that have infrastructure to support the development, makes considering an expansion at this time appropriate. Mr. Wilson, our Economic Development Director is present and can speak more directly to the successes and challenges to continuing this success. In April, at a community meeting, citizens expressed concerns about the proposed expansion and the potential negative impacts it may have on their quality of life. It is true that a change in land use designation and the introduction of new uses will have an impact on the community in this area. It is also true that if the county directs growth where we want it and where the new development occurs, it will be less impactful and be consistent with the goals and policies of the current comprehensive plan and maintain the principles of the plan into the fut- into future comprehensive plans. So this is a land use map of the current future land use map or the, of the, uh, or the prior land use map that was adopted with the Carmel Church, um, Growth Area. Note, the purple areas were intended for heavy industrial use. And so the area that we're talking about tonight is the area up in here, the northeast corner of the area. So prior to the introduction of the PERT, this area was, as I noted, was designated for heavy industrial use. The PERT designation reduces the expected intensity of land use to a more light industrial-type uses. The plan language noted that the area surrounding the county wastewater treatment plant is also designated as industrial with primary heavier industrial uses located between the plant and the existing industrial park. Light industrial uses are envisioned to be located along the frontage of Route 207. An open space in this area should be 20% or more for any parcel. So, part of the reason for consideration of the expansion is the fact that, one, we have changed this designation from heavy industrial here, which is what it was, and now it's PERT. We have development patterns that show industrial development expanding in this direction, and we have significant interests from multiple industries, not only data centers, but in this area here. And so a loss of, you know, significant acreages in that purple area would leave the county without uh, additional inventory for land to be developed. So this is a current zoning map of the, uh, primary, the Carmel Church Growth Area. And I would note that the black outline here represents all of the Carmel Church Growth Area. That is how it is today. The red area here is the existing PERT area. The blue line coming here, this is Route 207 here. This blue line would represent an expansion from the red to the blue. And then on the eastern boundary, this red line is the current boundary of both the PERT area and the, uh, Carmel Church Growth Area. This blue line would represent an expansion that we are talking about tonight, potential expansion here. So as you can see, the blue, these are industrially zoned properties throughout the, dispersed throughout the Carmel Church Growth Area. This is, uh, a closer shot overlaid over an aerial, uh, photograph. Again, the red area represents the current PERT boundary. The blue line represents proposed expansion area. Starting over here, part of the reason for the expansion along this western side of the Carmel Church Growth Area and the PERT there is because the line, the red line now dissects some of these parcels between there and Route 207, which is here. So this is an opportunity to just extend the line to Route 207, so those parcels along here are wholly within the PERT area. To the, further to the east or here, this current line also dissects some of these parcels here as well. And then, and down through here, there's some dissection of parcels. The expansion area identified in here would lend itself to future development. The red stars on the map here, um, the rest, the blue stars here and here are properties that the property owners, uh, have sent letters requesting that they be included in the PERT area, and they were sent after, uh, the advertisement was sent for this public hearing. So if the commission desires to include those, they can make the recommendation that they be included or not. And then, as the case moves to the board, then the advertisement would reflect that those parcels, uh, would also be included or not. So, just wanted to make that, that clear. And then again, this is overlaid over a parcel map. And so, just for clarification for people, this is Drybridge Road right here that extends over to Route 207, these are the train tracks here. This is the split between Drybridge and McBryant right here. So this portion of the, this is McBryant here, just so people can orient themselves. Pinola Road is off the map to the north here. And the reason, uh, there was a question asked about why this portion of the, was included is because this is a single parcel. And so, there again, trying not to dissect parcels, the boundary was extended to the border of that existing parcel. And that is the, the CSX rail line there, so. So to make that clear. This is an image of the Carmel Church Growth Area and the existing PERT identified in red, as I noted. The proposed expansion in blue. The current area is 1,466 acres, and the proposed expansion, uh, is the addition of approximately 1,635 acres for an approximate total of 3,101 acres. It should be noted, as I said, that after a public hearing was advertised, we had two individuals, two property owners that wanted to add the properties with stars. And so they could be included in the request or not, if the, the planning commission does recommend it, and they will be included in the advertisement for, uh, the board hearing. There again, just for people's orientation, this is the interchange here, so 104, 95 in the yellow, Route 1 here, 207 here, or Jericho Road out here. And then this is 207 here extending north along the boundary there. This dash line is a power line that runs, uh, through the county here. That's part of the infrastructure that makes this area, uh, desirable for these uses because of the availability of the power line and then the water and wastewater treatment facilities to the north. This is a, a little closer look at the area. Um, one thing I wanted to point out is, there's a, oh. There is a natural, uh, boundary, uh, along the creek here. This area in green represent wetlands areas and environmentally sensitive areas. And as you can note, there are fingers of those environmentally sensitive areas that run along the swamp and tributaries, uh, through these parcels here, as well as to the south, which will also further provide additional buffering, uh, from the areas highlighted in blue there. This map represents the current residential density in the area and the proximity of homes within a half mile of the boundary of the existing and the expanded area. There are 13.5 homes per square mile depicted in this image. Um, it should be noted that the half mile, the half mile area from the existing PERT boundary is here and around to this perimeter here. Um, it does not include all of Belmont in the existing boundary, but when the boundary expands, it does expand and take in 90 homes that are in Belmont. If you were to remove those 90 homes from the calculation of homes per square mile, the homes per square mile drops down to six homes per square mile. So again, the boundary of half mile radius from the perimeter around, and you can see the cluster of residential development along McBryant Drive down here. These homes, which are not in the, uh, current half mile radius from the existing PERT, would now be within a half mile of the proposed expansion area. And there are some homes just on the periphery here that are just outside, along McBryant, that are just outside of the half mile area. So I don't want people to think that their property is not shown, it is simply because, although there are some residential, as a matter of fact, there's one right in there, it's simply not within a half mile distance, but there are some residential units along McBryant in this area here as well. This is an aerial photograph, um, just to give you some context of the development patterns that are occurring in the area. This is the MCD facility here. Um, this, again, Drybridge Road runs out to here and then McBryant along here, and you can see much of this area in here is wooded. There are approximately 82 acres, uh, in field cultivation within this area right now. That 82 acres, uh, makes up about 2, 2.6% of the total of 3,100 acres if this was to be expanded. Just to get some context in terms of why it's desirable to have potential uses like this in an area like this, because it can be developed and be screened and buffered from, you know, much of the residential development that is down here along McBryant and clustered along McBryant in this area here. So one thing I would note, um, in addition to this proposed comp plan amendment, within, uh, the Carmel Church Growth Area, there's also another comp plan amendment that is going forward right now, uh, that the commission dealt with, I think, last month. Um, the Luck Development Corporation, um, is asking for, uh, I think 1,900 plus or minus acres, uh, to be, to have their land use designation changed from, um, from rural to, uh, rural transition to, uh, industrial. So that area for context is this area essentially in here. And essentially what that would do, excuse me, as well as it would expand, they have some parcel boundaries that extend beyond this line along here. And the proposal that the commission recommended approval was to essentially move this boundary to match the parcel boundaries that they have, uh, as a part of their proposal. So just to, for full disclosure and context, there's a potential comp plan changed in here as well as out here. And as I noted, this is being driven by, you know, the amount of inquiries and serious inquiries from, um, commercial industrial users that are looking at this area for, um, to do projects. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mr. Hughes, um, I will email you, but I'd like to have a copy of those first two maps you showed. Um, I may have them somewhere at home, but I don't remember. The, um, first one was 2030. And I forget what the second one was titled. But the first two on your presentation, yeah, I'd like to have that one in color and the second one, but I'll email you a reminder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes. This is more in reference to the procedure that we're attempting to review at this time, which is an amendment to the comp plan. I would ask in all sincerity, when was the last time the comp plan was reviewed by step?
Well, it, I guess last year when we started, when the Madam Mead designation was created, Madam Mead and this PERT area here. So I would say that was some, probably sometime in 2022, is before I got here, I'm sure, because that process was well underway when I got here.
So what you're telling me is before you came, you believed that the comp plan had been reviewed. Is that correct?
So, I guess, are you asking me a, a full review of the entire document?
Well, it is my understanding, it used to be anyway. I'm not saying it is still today, but it used to be that the state would mandate that the comprehensive plans had to be reviewed completely from one position to the next every five years. So what I'm asking, see, we keep trying to adjust the comp plan, and I understand the reasons why. I understand developers coming into the area. But what I'm trying to figure out is, are we dealing with the latest up-to-date comp plan as we know it to be today?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hughes, I'd like to go back in history just a little bit, if you don't mind, before I ask you a couple of questions. It wasn't but, what, three, four years ago, commissioners, that we went through the process on solar facilities. We had, uh, presentations, we had work sessions, uh, we had site visits. We ran the whole gamut of setting up for solar facilities. We even had, uh, the county attorney had to enact and get passed a county ordinance allowing site faci- uh, solar facilities. During the public hearings, I were mostly against, and the best that I recall, those that were in favor, either had a monetary interest in the outcome or, and this is just my opinion, they were, uh, paid activists. So, Mr. McKenzie, if I say anything that makes you cringe, I will fall on my sword, but I'm gonna call it the way I see it. We went through all of the glorious presentations of how fantastic these solar facilities were gonna be for Caroline County. We subsequently made a recommendation of approval for, I believe, two, and two of those facilities were approved by the board. Well, here we are, what, two years later? Nothing has been done. So all of that work, a- and the county subsequently repealed the county ordinance. Thank goodness. But we do have two that are on the boards that can go forward if they ever decide to turn a shovel. They haven't. We subsequently found that there were real problems with solar facilities. And a- a- as I recall, we were inundated, once, once we opened that door, we were inundated with solar companies trying to get into Caroline County. Thank goodness that door is shut. Well, now we're gonna be besieged by data centers. And commissioners, I will say this to you, in my opinion, our comp plan is akin to our U.S. Constitution. It was written and worded for a purpose. Now, the constitution can be amended, without a doubt. It takes a two-thirds majority of the states to ratify an amendment. But it seems like month after month, we are confronted with a request for a change to the comp plan. Simply because a developer has Simply because a developer has expressed an interest. Madam Mead, which was contingent upon an agreement with our friends to the north. To date, there is no contract. I doubt that there ever will be a contract with Spotsylvania. That's my personal opinion. So the land that has been designated for pert is going to sit there. And not one shovel of dirt will be turned. And I fear we're going down the same path with data centers that we went down with solar. And I am not, excuse me, excuse me. I quite frankly, am tired of people trying to cannibalize Caroline County. We have a beautiful county. We have a way of life that we love. Else we would not live here. And it just galls me to no end that people wanna come in and turn us into a concrete asphalt jungle. They can spout about beautiful campus areas all they want. But here, we're being asked just on this one issue alone to add a an additional sixteen hundred acres of land to pert. Now, we're about to hold a public hearing, but I think my feelings are quite well known. And I guess to Mister Hughes, and I'm not trying to belittle our planning director at all. He's doing exactly what he is supposed to do. But Mister Hughes, my question to you is this, sir. What benefit is it going to be to add an additional sixteen hundred acres to this land, to to this pert designation?
Sure. Well, the the idea being proactive is if if you've seen what data center companies are doing around the Commonwealth. So they are coming in, and they're not buying pieces of properties. They are buying large chunks of acreages. So in in an effort to try to prevent what has occurred in Northern Virginia, where there was limited acreages, so they put data centers on small lots relatively close to residential developments. So they've kind of learned from that lesson, and they are now looking at doing campus development. One of the closest to us is down in White Oak and Henrico. It's a good example of a data center campus. And so they are purchasing large acreages. Amazon purchased twelve hundred acres at Madam Mead. There are people looking at other large chunks or large acreages within the existing pert area. And so, you know, conceivably, if someone comes along and purchases a a good portion, twelve hundred so acres of existing pert area, then that leaves us a limited area for future opportunities in an area that has infrastructure to support this type of opportunity. So that is the the idea is to be proactive so that we don't have to go through a long lead time to get to a process if someone comes along and wants to go through a rezoning process.
All right, sir. Let's take Madam Mead, for example, twelve hundred acres. They propose in their GDP, two buildings.
In their first phase.
In their first phase. How many buildings do you think were they data centers? Not ancillary buildings, but data centers. How many data centers do you think would fit on that twelve hundred acres?
So in the original proposal, if I remember correctly, it was fifteen to twenty. Now, that's contingent upon a field delineation of the wetlands because and and that has already had an impact. When they have done a field delineation recently, their phase one is going to be one building because their wetlands impacted the area for their second building. So they have split their first phase into a phase one A and a phase one B because they have to get an additional permit from the Corps to impact the wetlands.
Eventually fifteen to twenty data center buildings in themselves.
Right. Over a twenty year period, yes.
Okay, over a twenty year period. I don't think the residents of Caroline County are aware of how much electrical energy it takes to run just one data center. I believe that there was a community style meeting. Was it last night with Dominion Energy?
Two nights ago.
Was it Tuesday? Okay. Unfortunately, I missed that. But before we go, I'll reserve those comments, but thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Appreciate your input. And commissioners, if you have no further questions, we're gonna open. Yes, ma'am.
Mister Hughes, can you remind me, I know it's probably in my buried in my paperwork here, how how large the pert area is right now without expansion? How many acres?
One thousand four hundred and sixty six.
So we'd be more than doubling it?
Yeah, it'd go if you if the acreage was added, it would go to three thousand one hundred and one.
And
Give or take.
How much have we used of the fourteen hundred?
We haven't used any to date.
Isn't the air cooled data center the one that's gonna be right beside ninety five materialized? Isn't that within the current pert?
It is not.
Okay. Oh, that's right. It's a little further to the west.
To the west, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And commission members.
Yes, sir.
Mister Wilson is here. If you like to hear his economic development perspective. I I hate for him to be here and I have to say.
If he would like to address the commission, that would be fine. Good evening.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Actually, Mister Hughes did an excellent job of explaining the general reason that we are looking to expand the pert area. We do have a lot of pressure on our existing inventory of M one properties. In fact, many of those are already taken up and under contract or have been purchased. So I've run out of inventory for additional expansion of investment. Investment is what I'm here for. I'm trying to get as much money for the county as possible to pay for schools, emergency services, have the best parks, et cetera. That that's what I do. And this is probably the most effective way we can do that without paving the whole county over with manufacturing or distribution and those sort of things. For every million square feet, say, of or a hundred thousand square feet, you would take sixteen times at least as much square footage of conventional businesses to create the revenue that a data center would. So when we have the opportunity to bring a lot of bang for the buck as it as it is for creating revenue, it made sense to us. Now, where the expansion is, we have east and west expansion areas on on the board. I think the western is easy to explain. There is, when the red line was originally drawn to the west, it actually cut existing parcels owned by MCD in half. So it made no sense to have a pert area that half of the land owned by one landowner was in pert and the other not. So that that's rounding out essentially a correction of what should have been the entire pert area. To the east, that's an efficacious expansion for what we have as far as pressure goes to meet the needs of prospects that I have. It's that simple. We have, however, in the past, had options, the EDAs had options on portion of the that pert area, the Carneal property. Yeah, I think his latest five years ago, we had an option on it. So it's something that the the EDA and the Department of Economic Development has been keeping an eye on as it's because very desirable piece of land to do some kind of industrial expansion. So that there is a history to this. There's a reason for it. And the the general theory is we're containing it in places where it makes sense, where the utilities are, that we can generally have all that together to make it a rational decision and keep it sequestered from the rest of the community. And and that's seems to be, we're talking about thirteen hundred, well, sixteen hundred acres, something like that. There's three hundred and thirty thousand acres in Caroline County. And so we're hoping that you think that or feel this is not a huge percentage to invest in your future. That's part of our thinking.
Yes, sir. I would agree with you in theory, absolutely. The three hundred and thirty thousand acres that we have, is that including or excluding Fort Walker?
Oh, that's everything.
That's everything. So that would be including Fort Walker, which we do not have access to.
Which is unfortunate, indeed. It's a that's seventy seven thousand acres, I think, that we don't receive income from taxing. I think we received a hundred and sixty eight dollars from Fort Walker this this year. So we're not gonna pay many bills with a hundred and sixty eight dollars. That that just, I think, makes my predicament even more clear that there's only so much land that we get to work with. And when we have real prospects that can create real revenue, we are trying to take advantage of that. Now, that's why it comes before this board, so that you can determine the wisdom of that or your feelings about it. But we have to bring you the opportunity, and that's what we're trying to do.
I understand, sir. But let let me ask you this. We've had some developers say fifty million dollars in annual revenue. I don't know that if that is a realistic figure or not. And the next one that comes before me better be ready to show me how they arrive at that figure. Because I'm Virginia born and Virginia raised, but I'm gonna pretend I'm from Missouri. You're gonna have to show me how you get to those figures. I don't think that that's realistic, but even so, if there were no data centers built in Caroline County, Caroline County will still survive, won't we?
I I hope so, yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate your input.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioners, anyone else have anything? Thank you, sir. All right, we will open the public hearing. Public hearing regarding this matter is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name and your voting district, please.
Good evening. Thank you for taking your time. My name is Cindy Crane. I vote. We just got changed, so it used to be Madam and I, Dawn. Now, I think it is. We just, we were one of the redistricts. What I would, I am the right hand star. The first I heard of any of this was six weeks ago. My grandchildren who come every summer and play in the woods and get to be kids like we all were are totally beside themselves because the fear of not being able to play in the woods, not being able to be kids and run free in the country. To your point, Mister Schwartz, that's why we're here. We left the city to come. Many of us did. But I have a few questions. I asked this before. The infrastructure, where is the dollars and cents that are proposed? We know we need new roads. Has anybody been down Drybridge when MCD is letting their shift off? Or when the trucks that are too big for the road, they have to shut the road down? Where's the infrastructure plan for all of this? I haven't seen it. I hope you have. What about housing? People are gonna work here. What about the people you displaced like myself? What about schools for our kids? We're already at the bare minimums. Our county is not the first on the list in Virginia. We need to work on that. What about internet? We all know what that situation is in Caroline County. Water, as you spoke about, and power? Has anybody looked into any of this? Because I've asked for the plan. I asked for the spreadsheet to show me. What I understand from a revenue point of view, you get a dollar eighty five an acre. That's what was agreed to with the other counties. That's not a lot of money as we're all aware. As a landowner, when this was first presented, all of that blue area there, the big piece, was one landowner in Caroline County. I find that interesting. I've been here over thirty years. My children went to Caroline Middle School, Caroline High School. My oldest daughter is an accountant at Dahlgriff. My youngest daughter is an attorney. I worked hard with them to get them through Caroline County schools at that time, and they weren't the best. They've gone on and made good lives for themselves. So I ask, to your point, to allow us to think about this and to really weigh it out. That's all I say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Miss Crane, do you have have access to the internet?
Of course.
Would you please look me up on the Planning Commission and email me? I would like to talk with you about some things.
Thank you so much, yes.
Thank you.
Write your name down.
You can you can get it off of the website for the county under the Planning Commission. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mark Atkinson, Western Carolina. I'm wearing a Sierra Club T shirt because I spent last night at a seminar up in Fredericksburg about the environmental impact of data centers. I have a lot of concerns that boil down, the big ones are water and power. And we've got an area that's already designated for data centers, and to my knowledge, it sounds like nothing's been built there. Why don't we get some built there and see what happens in real life before we volunteer for more and more and more and leave it up to chance? Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Atkinson. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, Miss Hodge.
Hello. Good evening, Chairman Schwartz and members of the Planning Commission. Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. When are you gonna get the memo, which I think you already, you may already have it, that Caroline residents do not want data centers in our county? We all live here because we love farms and forests and trees and the rural lifestyle that we all contribute to. It was very disappointing that one of Mister Fencham's last acts with us was to set up the pert zoning in the Carmel Church area, which blindsided everyone in the community because we didn't know what the heck it was. Naively, we learned it meant the hyperscale data center industry and not and not just an individual store sized building with computers inside, but massive complexes of multi story, million square feet buildings encompassing thousand acre tracts of land. And no one seems to be able to say why so many seem to be needed in addition to those that already exist. But I surmise it has to do with certain people's stock portfolios and not really a productive industry that provides a basic necessity of life. I got chastised for opposing the AWS project as this the one this one was unbeknownst to the public, the one that the county had been negotiating with Spotsylvania for years. And the deal was purported to be a good one, as Spotsy was to provide the electric and water infrastructure, which I see it still hasn't materialized. I was told that this part of the county was already ruined. Yes, it is. I take strong exception to Mister Wilson prostituting our county to the data center industry, advertising with expensive ads in Foreign Affairs Magazine and elsewhere touting infrastructure that is not even in existence. He and Mister Thompson tried to get Jericho Road rezoned. Now, the other rich man, rich man from Richmond wants to cash in on the latest scam, too. This property is in an environmentally sensitive area. This property is in an environmentally sensitive area that drains into the Mattapani and should be kept in forestry and agriculture, not industrial and polluting use. Power and water should be used for human purposes and the people who live here, not feeding machines. We, the people, will be paying dearly in increased electric bills and taxes. Please do not approve any further acreage in Caroline for the data center industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm Steve Norm. I think it's the Reedy Creek Voting District. I apologize, I'm not positive. But we're on McBryant, right, probably like twenty feet out of that half-mile boundary that was shown on the map. So I, you know, we, as I think, it sounds like a lot of people, moved here to get away from development. You know, like, we previously lived in the city of Richmond. Prior to that, many years ago, up in northern Virginia. And I actually work in not direct land data centers, but in that industry. I want that nowhere near where I live and raise my family. You know, the environmental concerns, the noise, the heat, the utilities that it requires, you know, there's a reason that, you know, you're talking about how northern Virginia has a lot of them. That's because that's already massively built up. You know, the, there was talk of the low-density housing being why they would be a good fit for this location. The low housing density is one of the points of rural preservation, to preserve the rural character of Caroline County. You know, that character that is the reason that, you know, my family and I'm sure many others moved here. To throw that away to try to provide a bit more money, like, would, would the roads being better be nice? Sure. Could the schools improve? Absolutely. But not at the cost of the actual character of the county, you know, like, the reason that we live here. Yeah, you know, I've, I've heard of, you know, in addition to the money that it, that a data center would theoretically bring in, the jobs it would create, it, data centers create not zero jobs, but very close to it. Everything in them is automated and heading more and more that way every day. You know, there's maybe a half dozen people for a massive, massive facility. So it doesn't help provide jobs. It doesn't help the community other than a potentially not-that-large amount of money at the cost of, sure, it's only, what, an extra sixteen, seventeen hundred acres out of a, you know, large county? That's a lot easier to say if you don't live, you know, within sight of those sixteen, seventeen hundred acres. You know, I certainly haven't lived here in Caroline as long as, you know, many of the people at this meeting, only a few years. But it, it feels a bit bait and switch for the rural preservation zoning to be treated as, you know, our go-to industrial site. It just, yeah, doesn't, does not feel right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Eric Brochus and Reedy Church.
What was your last name, sir?
Brochus.
Okay, thank you.
Reedy Church District. I don't know if it was changed or what, but part of the data centers is the possibility of an eight-megawatt need for power. Has anyone done any kind of EMF study on the impact of what that power consumption would be? For an example, if you were to take an EMF reader with electromagnetic frequency radiation, take a meter just around your house, walk up close to an outlet, walk in front of your TV, and see how much radiation you're being exposed to just in your home. And your home is nowhere near eight megawatts. What's that going to be? Yeah, there's only a few of us that live around there, but is that, is that okay at the expense of all of our health? And my other concern is, I've heard throughout the different places that I've lived, oh, we, we usher in this business and we can bring down taxes. Wouldn't you like your homeowner's taxes to be reduced? Oh, yeah, I'd love it, instead of every year it being increased. But I guess, I think I've made my point. Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Bob Ferrer. I live in the Mattapani District. I'm going to sound like a broken record here. You've heard everyone speak opposed to this change. I also oppose it. The comprehensive plan was well thought out. It was well designed, and yet I attended a meeting with the Board of Supervisors last month where, again, there's an initiative to change the, the comprehensive plan. And I'm not sure that we throwing out the baby with the bathwater every time we want to potentially get more money into the county. At what cost do we sell the future of this county for the children? And so I, I encourage you all to consider not approving this. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I've stood at this podium more times than I thought I would.
And for the record, you-
Oh, sorry. Kevin Collins, Reedy Church District. I've stood in front of this podium many, many times. I didn't prepare anything directly for tonight, as I emailed my thoughts on this change. But I just wanted to point out some things that I, I think the county is not really pointing out. Two of the properties in that blue area are actually owned by the county. I don't know if they were left off the list on purpose or not being advertised as such because the last two comp plan changes, they listed property owners around. This one fails to do that. Two of the properties are owned by Caroline. I don't know if there's any connection there, probably with the reuse water system that does not exist and is not in place yet. But there's potential for reuse, so I can understand them including that. But what I don't understand is why are we trying to go outside of the growth area again? The comprehensive plan has made it clear that we have certain growth areas. We created a brand-new growth area in the north of the county because there wasn't one in that area. So we've created that. We created this, which is within the zoning, or I'm sorry, within the growth area, yet we still try and keep adding on. We talk about running out of property, and we, we have to keep our inventory up, which I find false. I just spent a good portion of the beginning of this meeting going through the county website, and I've got Air Lee, three hundred acres. Good Earth, a hundred and forty acres. Aldon Megasite, which is going to see probably data centers in Ladysmith, five hundred acres. We have this Carmel Church Supersite, nine hundred and thirty-nine acres. Six hundred acres at the Caroline Center for Innovation, a couple more here. That added up to about twenty-four hundred acres of land that has not been touched or used in Caroline. What has our economic development department been doing for the past fifteen years? We have all these sites sitting empty, and they're located right up the middle of the I-95 Route 1 corridor, where we intended these things to go. We didn't intend to keep going out this way to the east, this way to the west. We just fought off one to the west that made no sense. Now we have one to the east that doesn't really make any sense. It's one landowner that owns ninety-five percent of that land you see in blue. To the left of the red, I could understand readjusting property lines for land already owned by MCD, which has been a great neighbor and job supplier of this area. And if they want to fill in that red with as many data centers as they can, I guess that's their right, because we dedicated it that way. So again, stick to the comprehensive plan, and let's see where we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just a-
Yes, sir.
Just a clarification. To reiterate what I said in my earlier testimony, those properties are under contract or have some other obligation. That, that were, that was just referenced as, nothing happened.
The properties on, are not, near ninety-five.
The roughly twenty-four hundred acres that Mr. Collins-
Are under contract.
Most of, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And you can't control whether or not those contracts are pushed forward or not. Once the contracts are made between the developer or landowner and another company, you have no enforcement power to say, hey, get going.
No, sir, I'm only Director of Economic Development, not czar, so.
Very good. Thank you. Excuse me, sir. Negative, negative. We do not yield out from the audience. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Casey Jackson. I'm with Reedy Church District. And I oppose the data centers myself because I'm a truck driver for MCD, and if anybody's here from MCD, and you want to go snitch to the boss, do what you got to do. I don't kiss ass. But I'm going to tell you like this. I'm, I'm looking at you, but I'm talking to the people behind me. You don't want those buildings up. They massive buildings, they going to wipe out every tree. The poor animals ain't got nowhere to go now. They going to put these big generators up. I don't know what they do, but all your land, everything, it's going to be gone. It's going to be asphalt, fences, and you not going to be able to go near it. So if you want to mess up your county and, you know, I'm used to going outside and hearing birds chirp and relax. Once they put those buildings up, you can forget that. You won't have nothing. You're going to have these big, massive buildings. And another thing, if you want to see the buildings, take ninety-five south, the two, I'm talking to the people behind me, ninety-five south to two ninety-five, like you going to Virginia Beach, run that to Route sixty east. Hop off on Technology Boulevard, go about a half a mile, keep looking to the right, you're going to see the massive buildings on the right. Keep going, get the Portuguese Road, you're going to circle it. You're going to see the massive buildings on your right. So if that's what you want in Caroline County on Drybridge Road while you live, hey, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Thank you for holding this and giving us your time. My name is Dana Lepato. I'm from the Reedy Church District.
I'm sorry, I did not catch your name, please.
Dana Lepato.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I listen to people describing, or I should say, the, the proposals describing the impact, it strikes me that they are underselling the kinds of impacts that could happen to the community and likely would. When we talk about the impact of the water use of the electricity, there's also light pollution that comes from these sorts of projects. And, and more to the point, when I hear people talk about the impact and, and the appeal of low-density housing, one concern I have is that when they see low-density housing, which is the point of, of rural preservation, is that what they're actually seeing is, oh, I can sell this as I'm only impacting a small number of people, not really thinking about the total magnitude of the impact, but thinking that there will be relatively few individuals that they would have to inconvenience. And I, I do think that is, yeah, it starts to feel like trying to exploit the rural area as something for commercial gain, and it, it does not sit well with me. And it, it strikes me that we already have an area specifically for this, and that expanding it is just inappropriate at this time. And, and into such an environmentally sensitive area, it, it just does not make sense, and I strongly oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Karen Brochus, Reedy Church District. And I just want to go on the record for also opposing this plan as, I'm also off of Drybridge Road, and we, our property is, in our opinion, we've always called it, to everybody we know, our paradise. It is a paradise, just like the gentleman just said, that we get out and listen to the beautiful birds every morning singing. It's just amazing. And to think that that's going to be stripped away from us is, is very disheartening. And I just wanted to also note, agreeing with a parent neighbor down the street that said, lived in that star, the roads need to be fixed so bad before anything major gets done. Drybridge is horrible. I, I got a flat tire on that road because of the holes from those big trucks that are, we have to veer out of the way because it's too narrow, and then you hit one of them holes. I got a flat tire. A neighbor down the road got a flat tire. It's, it's, the road is disastrous. It just need, that should take the monies to be fixed before any major plans get done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Final call. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, any further questions of Mr. Hughes? There being no discussion, I would like to make a motion. Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good planning, land use, and zoning practices warrants the denial of this, the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, I recommend that the amendment be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of denial.
Second.
Motion by the Chair, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Mr. Williams, were you in on that second as well, or not?
Yes.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Williams as well. All those in favor of recommendation of denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Unanimously, this matter will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of denial. Now, what the Board does with it, ladies and gentlemen, is out of our hands. Thank you for your consideration and your time this evening. Please, please, please. Moving on, I believe Mr. Pennington has this one, RZ zero-two, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. First rezoning tonight, RZ zero-two, twenty-twenty-four, the Preserve at Hidden Pond. The applicant's requesting approval of rezoning from rural preservation to rural residential two to allow for a twenty-lot subdivision. The intent of the RR2 zoning district is to provide for limited residential development in rural areas where such development reflects the existence of rural residential development lots of two to five acres in size. This rezoning proposes to maintain the same density as the byright density of the existing RP zoning. A byright subdivision would allow for twenty-one ten-acre lots. After removing the acreage for the roadway and stormwater management, appropriately, approximately twenty-one lots could be achieved. The rezoning would allow for twenty-two acre lots on forty-four acres with a hundred and sixty-seven acres remain, remaining zoned RP. The subject parcel is located on the south side of Ladysmith Road, approximately one point three miles west of the entrance to Lake Landor, and point two miles east of Countyline Church Road. The property is a thousand feet from the edge of the Ladysmith Growth Area and portions of the Lake Landor subdivision. All of the surrounding parcels are zoned RP and range from two to seventy acres. GDP shows a thirty-foot dedication from Center Line for the right-of-way on Ladysmith Road. This subdivision would create one new VDOT- This subdivision would create one new VDOT road with 10 two-plus acre parcels on each side of the road and 167 acre lot to remain RP at the end of the cul-de-sac. The GDP has a 50-foot landscaping buffer between Ladiesmith Road and the subdivision, and a walking trail is provided around the perimeter of the subdivision for recreation. The remaining lot would continue to be zoned RP and would be buildable in access from Hidden Pond Drive. There is a proffered restriction on family subdivisions for the RP parcel that would allow for, for one family subdivision with a maximum of seven lots, seven years after construction. The comprehensive plan depicts this area as rural preservation and further states development should be limited to conservation subdivisions. The proposed rezoning would have the majority of the property zoned RP. The statement of intent for the RR2 zoning district states that it is to provide for limited residential development in rural areas. This proposal does not increase the density of what is allowed in the RP zoning district. Agency comments provided by, by VDOT will require some labeling on the provided GDP, but then it does not affect the design of the project. The project does not require turn lane according to warrants provided to VDOT, and there would be no improvements to Ladiesmith Road. The current vehicles per day for Ladiesmith Road is 9,500, and the proposed development would be, would add 200 vehicle trips per day. The applicant is proffering all improvements shown on the GDP, proffering no more than 21 houses, 20 of which are located on 2-acre parcels. The remaining parcel of 167 acres will remain RP and will allow for one family subdivision with a minimum, maximum of seven lots after seven years. Architectural guidelines regarding minimum square footage of single-family homes has been proffered. The proffers restrict certain uses of the RR2 zoning district to residential dwellings and accessory uses, including parish houses, rectories, cemeteries, and non-commercial kennels will be prohibited. All uses by special exception in the RR2 zoning district are prohibited with the exception of convalescent homes, nursing homes, and home childcare facilities. The applicant proffers to dedicate 30 feet of right-of-way for Ladiesmith Road and a 50-foot landscape buffer between Ladiesmith Road and the subdivision. Also, there's a 1.5-mile walking trail around the perimeter of the subdivision also proffered. And that concludes the presentation, it's, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Pennington?
And the applicant's here also, if you'd like to have a presentation.
Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to speak?
Yeah, hello, I'm Kerry Vornador, along with my wife Lawrence, my daughter Kelly, and our engineers here as well. What we've, uh, done is taken, uh, a, a book from your previous conversation, and we've, uh, are conserving, uh, three-quarters of this development. We're only taking 43 acres or so and building the houses and conserving roughly 170 acres, of which there is a nice pond, there's a lot of water, uh, features, there's a lot of wildlife in here. So what we've done is taken and put a road approximately a half mile long and taken two-acre parcels through 20 lots, and then the one residual properties in the back. And, uh, this was, probably it's been over a year in the works. We came to Craig, I think even before Leon came on board, and proposed this to him, they were excited. And we were talking about a cluster subdivision. And since they didn't have a cluster ordinance, uh, Craig thought this was the best way to proceed, so we followed his direction. And there's been some hiccups along the way, but we've gotten to this point. I think Craig and Leon have been very supportive of this. So, uh, I could answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Dr. Horton.
So, what are your future plans for this 167 acres?
You know, that's-
You could come back and, you know, wanna expand in the future, more houses.
Well, I think if we put restrictions up front, we're gonna be bound by that. So, Craig had mentioned earlier that theoretically, the 160 some acres could yield 80 more lots. Or you could suggest that the 221-acre parcel by itself potentially has the buy rights yield of over 100 lots, if you go with the family division language. So that was gonna be the sticky point, so Craig and I came to a conclusion that we would only allow one future subdivision, or division as they call it, seven years down the road, as opposed to multiple divisions over time. So that's what we had thought, you know, and we're receptive to input because we're not looking to, you know, get greedy, so to speak, and go beyond what we would have had. You know what I'm saying? In other words-
I, I think the only way, and, and, and maybe, you know, staff or attorney can correct, I think the only way that the remaining 167 acres would not be developed if it was put in preservation, with the preservation group. Otherwise, I think, you know, there's possibly a future development there.
Uh, it could be put into preservation, but a proffer that would restrict any subdivision, then that would stay in place with the land forever. Um, and then anybody that wanted to develop that further would have to come back to the Board to have that proffer removed. Um, so it could be placed in conservation, but a proffer restricting the subdivision of that 167 acres would stop it also.
Uh, Mr. Penning- While you're there, um, thought I saw something in there that said about nursing homes and convalescence centers, that's gonna be permitted?
As a special exception use, and so if someone wanted to do an in-home childcare center or a nursing home as a special exception use in their home, then they could come to the Board and get approval, but that would still require Board approval, um, in that situation.
Thank you.
So am I understanding correctly, sir, that you are willing, or that it is already in the proffers, that the remaining 160 acres could only be divided once in seven years?
That's correct, one, one more division, period.
And the one more division would be how many houses?
Well, it says we put max of 7. We've got, right now, in our family line that would fall under this, you know, guideline, we could have as much as 20 right now, but, you know, we're looking down the line, you know, kids and grandkids, and we figure seven is a good enough number.
Because, see, I mean, each time we put in 20 lots, that's a potential of 80 people, and we just, we just turn down some tax revenue. We gotta have it, each time we build a house, we gotta have the tax revenue for the infrastructure, the fire and rescue, the deputies, the schools. So, just, and you know, it, it can keep going down the road. We gotta be careful about proven houses, but not approving businesses. Because really, you don't get, you know, a lot of tax revenue out of houses. You gotta get it out of businesses in order for us to provide schools, you know, our portion of the roads, fire protection, things like that. And also, you know, water is a concern with all of the localities, not just Caroline County. Water is a concern providing, of course, these will, will be on well, but, I mean, the wells are, the water levels are going down.
Um, so, the, this property would not be in the groundwater management zone. The presentation that DEQ provides, um, stated that all properties east of 95, then they need to be looked at for groundwater management, uh, being in the aqua and potomac aquifer. Um, however, anything west of 95 is not in the groundwater inundation area.
So these are wells?
They, they would be wells.
Yeah, they'll have their own wells.
And in that area, they come off of the Piedmont side and not the groundwater side. So it's entirely different, uh, aquifer than you would. The, one of the things that I, I, I did note with, with a bit of concern is, I believe on that section of Ladiesmith Road, the speed limit is 55 miles per hour?
I think it's 45.
It is 45, okay.
Yes.
Uh, because I know that VDOT estimated 9,500 vehicles per day,
and that, uh, if approved, and your 20 units go in,
that would add an additional 200 trips, which is, uh, roughly a 20% increase. And, uh, I, I would just have concerns about, I think my math is right on that.
20%, maybe 2%?
200 vehicles into 10,000?
Into 10,000, that's about 2%. Or is it, is it less than 2%? Two tenths of a percent?
It, it would be a little less than 2%.
Okay, that's what I get for trying to do math in my head.
That's right.
I, I apologize. But, but my concern would be someone trying to make a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn, uh, and-
Well, yeah, we studied that, and Bridlewood, for instance, which is more, much closer to 95, and a lot of those vehicles per day are probably within the first mile or two. So Bridlewood has at least double the units. No right-hand turn lane, no left-hand turn lane. So, you know, it's maybe half of that, and it's, you know, about three or four miles to the west of it.
Okay.
I think even Ladiesmith Village only has a right turn lane. And the apartments across the street, they only have a right turn lane, so there is no left turn lane.
Right, there's no room for it.
There's not room for it, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, but, you know, we would be willing, if VDOT comes back in the final studies and says a right turn lane would be necessary, we certainly would be willing to do that. The left turn lane, there's not enough room on the property. They would have to acquire right-of-way off-site to make that happen.
Okay, so that's something you'd be willing to put in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean-
That's something you would be willing to put into writing?
We would put that into writing, that we would cooperate fully if there was a, if the need arose.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, water supply is no good deal?
So, buy rights, it's 221 and a half acres, correct? So it's a potential of 20 houses on the whole?
Yes, it's 221 acres, uh, you could use the same road and same stormwater management. The road is just above five acres, the stormwater management would be somewhere between two and four acres. So out of the 221, they would lose somewhere between five and nine acres in road and stormwater management. It would leave them around 210 or 211 acres. So by right, they would get 20 or 21 houses out of the property as it is.
Okay, but we're saying we want those 20 houses to just go on 167 acres?
Forty-three.
No, wait a minute, excuse me, 43 acres.
That, that's what the applicant is-
So we're starting to create subdivisions in that area, is what we're saying.
Yeah. Technically, you could get 22 lots if you were creative. In other words, the road would be deeded over, you know, you'd have a private road, but let's say 21 is probably what the yield would be.
But the, the, what concerns me is the other 167 acres, which may become a subdivision in the future.
Nah, if it's, you know, restricted properly, you can't, I mean, it goes into the, uh, it's recorded.
But I didn't, I didn't see anything on here that restricts it, did I wrong, staff?
Uh, the proffer restricts family subdivisions to one subdivision, but doesn't speak to any future major subdivision of it.
Yeah.
So the proffers, as written right now, would allow somebody to come in and do 16 more lots on the 167 acres.
Okay, is that all, just 16 more?
Uh, it would be RP, and so it would, it would be 10-acre lots of-
Yeah, unless somebody comes back and asks for another-
Another rezoning.
Rezoning, yeah. So, so it just kinda, it's like we're starting another Ladiesmith Village or Pendleton's Crossing.
Yeah, Dr. Horton, I see your point exactly, because one can generate another, uh, and it's not that I'm against what the gentleman wants to do. Uh, I, I'm concerned also about setting a precedent for other landowners. So I've really got some mixed feelings on it.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to start the public hearing?
Yes, sir, I would. The public hearing regarding RZ 02 2024 is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Teresa White, and I live in the Western Carolina District. I will say, however, or ask, were all those slides on the website as part of the packet? Because I only got six pages to print off, and a, a few of the items that were up there didn't print off on my paperwork. So if I misquote something, please correct me. Um, but I have concerns about the request to resume the Preserve at Hidden Pond property on Ladiesmith Road. Um, I reviewed the fiscal impact statement on the proposal, and being a former owner of a small business in Caroline for many years, um, and after reviewing the numbers that were printed in this packet, I do not see where this is at all a good deal for the county. Um, they estimated that the total yearly revenue generated from this project would be $206,500. They estimated that the only expense to the county would be the cost of educating approximately 19 students for an estimated annual cost of $20735. Now, when I do that math, I come up with we only get $5,765 of net revenue generated each year for the county. They did estimate that $120,000 would be acquired in one-time rezoning and permitting fees. Um, but I feel like we should not factor that in as these are, as they stated, one-time-only fees that the county gets once and never again. The costs to the county to support this new development go on forever. Nowhere in this cost-impact projection do they address the cost of additional fire and rescue services, additional police or community services costs associated with bringing at least 60 to 80 new residents to the county population. Um, and this property also happens to be on an already dangerous curvy stretch of Ladiesmith Road where traffic is already a concern. Estimating at least two drivers per home adds at least 40 more cars coming and going. Uh, and then lastly, the last meetings I attended for other rezoning requests in the county have all brought forth major concerns about water availability in the county. So why would we approve more housing developments when water availability cannot even be guaranteed to the projects already approved? This is not a good deal for the county. Please recommend that this request be denied. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Commissioner Schwartz and members of the committee. My name is Kate Allen. I am the spouse of C. Dabney Allen Jr., owner of Farish LLC on Ladiesmith Road. Our farm, um, is surrounded by the property in consideration right now. With all due respect to their wishes and their creativity in creating a new community, we oppose this, um, simply for many of the reasons stated by the woman who came up before. We're concerned about the rural character of Caroline and preserving that. My husband grew up here in Ladiesmith, graduated from C.T. Smith High School, um, has farmed here in Caroline for 50 years. And, um, we respect, again, um, this couple's desire to, um, build this neighborhood, but we, again, we're just very concerned- But we, again, we're just very concerned about particularly the rest of the land use that you kept bringing up, Ms. Horton. Um, what is going to happen seven years? And then who can come back and keep asking for more and more? And then secondly, I'm a school teacher, and while I didn't teach in Caroline, I taught in Fairfax County, a really great example of where they kept building neighborhoods, but they did not have the tax money to fund the school systems. And so you're overworking your teachers, your firemen, all of your public service people when you're bringing in a neighborhood like this, but there's not enough money to go around to take care of those families who deserve to be taken care of. Their children deserve to be taken care of. The roads are also a consideration, the turn lane. I think it's wonderful that he will pay for a right turn lane. But again, um, Caroline County is rural, and so we would ask that you would keep it as rural preservation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mark Atkinson, Western Caroline. I really appreciate the gentleman's attempt to try to do things right here. But the concern keeps coming up about water use and building more homes. I've got a well. Everybody out there is on a well. And when things start to really dry up, as they're going to, there's no plan to relieve us. There's plans to bring the Rappahannock Water for the people that are on county water, but I haven't heard anybody say anything about those of us who are in wells. There's also the issue that, um, it's a slippery slope as we start to allow homeowners or property owners to build little subdivisions, then more and more and more come on without any plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening again, members of the commission. Uh, Kevin Collins, Reedie Church. Um, I'm a firm believer in doing what you want with your land. I don't want anybody to not be able to pursue their dreams. Um, but in asking for changes, it sets off alarm bells as far as future development. The rezoning calls for twenty-one two-acre lots. So you could put twenty-one homes. By right, twenty-one homes can already go there. So with this intention of that future property split, nothing in writing is ever permanent. We've seen that lots of times. Amendments can be made, new rezoning can be brought up. Um, some projects can be brought back for a second look. Uh, but I do not support a subdivision of that size on Lady Smith Road. Um, there's a large cemetery that borders this property, a church that brings a lot of traffic during, you know, the weekends. Um, they do events during the week. Uh, Lake Landor is right down from County Line Baptist Church. I get an alert on my phone weekly that there's been a motor vehicle accident at that entrance. And Bridlewood is getting ready to add a couple, I mean, forty, fifty homes. I haven't looked at any of the details. So you're going to have additional homes there. You're going to have additional homes coming to the south side of Lady Smith Village. We just approved five hundred homes in Belmont last year. Currently, there's, give or take, twenty thousand lots on the books already in Caroline County that could be built at the snap of a finger. Ten thousand are in Carmel Church. If they wanted to start building them, they can. But I go back to the same thing. We have areas in our county that are designated a certain way. Have at it. Put twenty-one homes, ten acre lots. That's preserving rural preservation. That's what it meant for. That's why we developed that. Um, it's unfortunate that his land is not in an area that's RR-two, and he can't fulfill his dreams, but it sounds like it is greed to me. It's more money for their family. I, I don't blame him for trying to get a couple more bucks, but do it with the land the way it's been zoned. There's no need to set that precedent because now you're going to have them running all the way to the county line, and then they start going down Jericho. They start going up county line or even other areas of the county that aren't on the ninety-five Route One corridor. So again, we have limited resources. We're trying to get a water source. The Board of Supervisors has been working on that ten, fifteen years from what we hear to get a water supply for Caroline, and we still haven't got it. So I would strongly recommend you put this to the Board of Supervisors for denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, I'm Mac Wright, Madison District. I just want to go on the record as telling you that DEQ may not be monitoring the groundwater on the east side of ninety-five, but the groundwater is going down. I've had property in Lady Smith for forty years, and last year I had two shallow wells and one deep well go dry. I was told it was probably from digging deep wells in Belmont. I'm sorry, Pendleton. And that is probably going to amplify. So water is of concern, not just those who are on county water, but the well water as well. So I am now faced with what am I going to do with my dry wells? I had some rain this week, so I have water. So I just wanted to let you know that water is a concern on the east side. I'm sorry, the west side for ninety-five. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Final call? Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one come forward, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Fondue, would you care to respond to any of the concerns, sir? You have ten minutes. And I hope I didn't butcher your name too badly.
Well, let me just say that if the family division is part of the RP zoning, and as long as I followed that criterion, I could build a lot more than twenty-one lots. In fact, matter of fact, I could take the plan that we put forth tonight and submit for permits probably under the family division rule, if that's a by-right use. So we're not trying to get over on anybody. We're trying to save the environment is what we, that's why we approached Leon and Craig a year and a half ago. We didn't want to tear through all the woods and all the wetlands to put roads through everything because I do run into hunters, and they tell me of all the wildlife that's in there. So that the intent was, yeah, I'm a home builder. I've been doing it for forty-some years. So, yeah, it would be nice to get a nice, small subdivision in there with two acre lots and then have our house in the back of it. So it was a way to create the yield, but also to build the road in so that we could build our house there, that's all. We weren't, uh, you know, and we're not some outside developer. We've owned the property for twenty years. I have a commercial piece of property on Route One. I built, I operated restaurants for years, and the intent was to settle here, open up, we have a piece of property right across from Pendleton's entrance. We were going to open up a pizza place, a burger place, a couple other strip things. So that was the intent. And, you know, it doesn't look like it's going that well, but uh, the concerns about the water, I haven't heard those. I would take him at his word that he knows more than I do about the water. Uh, the other concerns are just your routine, you know, shoot down the greedy developer, but we're not that type. Uh, the road thing, you know, there's always the potential for accidents on a road. VDOC could lower the speed limit. That would be one way to do it. There'll be a construction entrance signs on both sides, uh, eventually. You know, if they, if the people weren't driving like this, there wouldn't be accidents, right? So that's ninety-nine percent of the problem is human error. Uh, I don't think the road, we certainly have the site distance, uh, to look both ways, plenty far to pull out. And, uh, it's really a matter of, uh, you know, change, I guess, you know. I think ultimately that piece of property will yield a lot more than twenty houses down the road as long as the family division ordinance is still there. Uh, if you get rid of that, you could say, yeah, one lot per ten acres. Okay, let's rip every tree out. Let's put roads through there like, like they do up in Fairfax County, which I live. You go into Clifton, every square inch of that property is all five acre, ten acre lots, but it's all developed, and all you have is roads everywhere. So that'll eventually happen, but, you know, uh, we were trying to do it the correct way, like, uh, only take a little piece of it and put the houses, because when you have ten acre lots, you don't have a sense of community. But when you have two to five acre lots, it's a neighborhood. It's somebody can see your neighbor, you know, and it's a nice little community. And that was the intent, so. I don't know if I've answered the questions. It's, you know, you're not going to change people's minds. But, uh, we have our engineer here who developed the property, who's done a lot of rezones in Spotsylvania, Caroline, Fredericksburg, everywhere. And, uh, they, they designed it in such a way that would have minimal environmental impact. And that's what, that's what we tried to do. And as far as the fiscal, you know, this is based on your numbers, your tax rates, your current tax rates, the estimated appraisal rates of the houses. Uh, uh, it was to show that, not that you would generate, you know, twenty or fifty thousand bucks a year from them. It was to show that there'd be no fiscal, negative fiscal impact. If I really wanted to, you know, dot my I's, cross my T's, I'd go into, uh, other fees like restaurant taxes, uh, gas taxes. You know, you could really just run the gambit of every single fifty different taxes to generate more revenue, but I was just doing the overview. My goal was to show that it didn't give you a negative impact, that it wasn't going to cost more than it was going to add, that's all.
Thank you, sir. And I think we do have a firm grasp and understanding of what you want to do and your, your intent. And I don't think that there's any ill intent there at all. Uh, we do appreciate what your goal is.
And if, you know, if there's a fear of future re-subdivisions, I can't understand why the deed, when it's recorded, and why there, those restrictions couldn't be put on it. So that shouldn't be a fear. That should be something that's handled upfront before the site is, you know, recorded.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Pennington, quick question, sir, if you don't mind. Uh, how many other RP twos do we have in the county, roughly? If you were to take a guess?
Uh, we have a sixty-acre piece that is zoned RR-two, uh, that allows for twenty-nine lots. Uh, it was approved in two thousand and eight. Uh, however, it was not constructed after the housing crisis in two thousand and ten. Uh, the site plans were approved, but those are no longer valid by state code. But the zoning is still there, and so if someone were to submit a site plan, those, uh, twenty-nine two-acre lots could be constructed on those sixty acres. Um, other than that, there's some smaller RR-two parcels, but that's the only subdivision that was approved as RR-two that I can remember off the top of my head.
Less than ten?
Total lots?
Yes.
Outside of that?
Not lots, but total, uh, rezonings to RR-two.
It'd be definitely less than ten.
Maybe less than five?
As a subdivision, yes. There's, there may be, there is probably over five RR-two lots out there. But total subdivisions, most of the RR-two lots are standalone parcels that were rezoned, um, you know, back in the nineties where it was, you know, six acres that was zoned into three RR-two lots or, or items like that.
Uh, and I do have a question. I just want to make sure I'm doing the math right. So, um, right now, it has a potential for twenty-one lots, potential. And then if, if the families choose on those lots to do a family cutoff, then that's forty-two lots.
Correct. So every, every RP lot could have a family, uh, family sub, well, could have a family apartment, which would allow two dwellings on a parcel. And so that could make it forty-two. But family subdivisions, a ten-acre parcel could have two family subdivisions, so that could put three houses on each parcel. And so if theoretically, if every, all twenty-one lots did two family subdivisions, then you would end up with thirty, uh, um, sixty-three parcels.
So, I mean, that probably wouldn't happen, but.
Correct.
It's potential, but if we start dividing it up into two acre lots, we're saying a hundred and ten. I mean, right now, he only wants to do a small portion. But if it, you know, down the road comes back another application for more, that's potential for a hundred and ten. Two hundred twenty-one acres, right?
Two hundred twenty-one acres, yes. And so.
Two acre lots, that's a hundred and ten.
Yes, so if they came back to try and rezone the other one hundred and sixty-seven acres to RR-two, um, yeah, it would be around, yeah, around a hundred.
So I'm just concerned that we're setting a precedent, yeah. I mean, we just turned down businesses, but we're saying we, houses.
Yeah, I just want to clarify a little bit on the legal piece on, on the, on that.
Okay.
So we've got, you know, the submitted reason, just to go right back to the very start legally, it's a rezoning with proffers submitted by the applicant, right? So, you know, we have to take the, the proffers as they're submitted, um, because unlike a special exception, we don't get to put conditions on it. We take the proffers, they have to be voluntarily submitted by the applicant. So what's been proffered here is a couple of things. The first is they've proffered a general development plan that shows that they want to make twenty-one lots, twenty-two acre lots. They're going to put houses on as shown, one house on each lot as shown in the GDP. And then the remaining lot, Lot Twenty-One, it's a hundred and sixty-seven acres. Um, and so that's the residual lot, the big residual lot that, that you heard from the applicant, they were going to put their own home on, one home on. Um, so that's the number, under this rezoning, that's the number of homes you, you start with, right? Is twenty-one. Um, and correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong, staff. Um, so then the question becomes what, what, what happens in the future with that big balance parcel of a hundred and sixty-seven acres? And there's, that's the proffer that we've talked about a couple of times that reads currently, the remaining lot, Lot Twenty-One, consisting of approximately a hundred and seventy acres, will remain in the RP zoning and will enjoy all the by-right zoning, by-right zoning categories of the RP zoning, except that only one family subdivision with a maximum division of seven lots will be permitted after seven years. So that's, that's the proffer that was submitted. We don't get to rewrite that. We have to take it as it's come, as it comes. And then in your packet, in the staff report, you can see staff said, we have some concerns about this because it's a little unclear about what it means. And in particular, the question is, that proffer speaks to family subdivisions, which is one of three types of subdivisions that can happen under our ordinance. You have a family, you can have a major, you can have a minor. And the ambiguity with that proffer comes from the fact that it talks about limitations on when and how much you can do a family subdivision with that balance, but it doesn't talk about major or minor subdivisions. So I think the concern that's been raised, and it seems like the applicant might be willing to address that concern in a different proffer, would be to make clear that what's intended is to completely rule out major and minor and just have family subdivisions. But, but we, again, we can't rewrite that, so we have to take it as it comes. And what I think Mr. Pennington was saying is that if you interpret this proffer to say that it doesn't restrict major subdivisions, um, that it only speaks to family subdivisions, then at some point in the future, someone could take that hundred and sixty-seven acres and make sixteen ten-acre lots out of it. Think of that right? Okay, so that's, that's, you know, as presented, you could, unless that proffer gets clarified, the, the staff's reading of that is that you could end up with twenty-one, as shown in the GDP, right now. The two acre lots and the one big one. The one big one could then become seven. The one big one could then become seven lots, you know, we, you know, whether lot is different from a parcel, that's a little unclear, that's why the staff flagged that, but say that it's seven parcels, okay, so now you're at 27 parcels. Or if a major subdivision is allowed, you make 10 new, or I'm sorry, 16 new lots out of that remainder, so now you're at 36. So that's, those are the numbers under this conditional zoning that you'd be looking at by my read, unless that proffer is clarified.
But there's nothing right now saying that, that 167, that whoever owned that 167 couldn't come back and ask to have it become another subdivision, correct?
Of cour, so, yes, and I think that was raised at some point tonight, which is, you know, if there is, let's say that that proffer is revised, and it, and it more expressly excludes major and minor subdivisions, and it says, no major or minor subdivisions, just one family subdivision. Yes, there's nothing that would prohibit a future owner from coming back and asking the county to amend that proffer, to remove that prohibition. But of course, that would be up to the county to decide whether or not to amend that proffer.
Mr. McKenzie, Dr. Horton, let me ask you, if the proffers were written with a bit more clarity, would that be helpful to you?
It, it would probably, to me, my concern is what's going to happen to the 167 acres in the future. There's nothing from, you know.
I, I see exactly what you're saying.
It's not going to stay under preservation in other words. I mean, I know by rights, it would be 16 more houses, but that is not, that is not guaranteed.
Maybe if we were to defer this matter and give staff and all of us time to clarify the proffer and clear up any cloudiness, do you think that might be beneficial?
It, it could, it could be beneficial, you know, I don't know, I don't know what would, you know, the applicant would say in the future, so, you know, I don't know what my decision would be. But I'm just like, I'm saying that we just turned down business revenue, but we're saying we're going to build more houses. You got to have a balance.
Absolutely.
Somehow, we got to have, we got to figure out a way to pay, there's not going to be 19 kids in 21 houses. I mean, usually we account for two kids per household, on the average, so that's 40 kids.
But Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
The problem is still the issue of water. I mean, you know, we keep saying we could expand on this, we could expand on that, we could expand on that, and every time we get to a point, it's like, where are we getting the water from?
Yes, sir, I agree with you, it's not only, for me, it's not only the water issue, but it's the issue of setting a precedent for the future, not only in that area, but countywide.
Agreed, agreed.
But I'll be happy to do, you know, recommend a deferral, or if someone motions for a deferral to clear it up, but I'm, I'm just saying what I'm having a problem with. I don't know if Mr. Young or Mr. Williams wish to come in to the fray or not.
Mr. Williams, since it's your neighborhood?
Yeah, it's, it is my neighborhood, and I mentioned to George that the bigger problem is going to be, like Mr. Wright had expressed, the future water. I mean, we are having unprecedented weather events, where there's a lot of heat, which forces farmers like Mr. McRae to use waters out of deep wells, and they're running dry. There is no plan to bring water out to that far end of Western Carolina anytime soon, none.
Well, I think we've beat this horse to death enough. Does someone wish to make a motion if there's no further discussion?
I, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Whereas zoning requests RZ 022024 for the Preserve at Hidden Pond appears to be generally inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan in future land map use, whereas the public necessity convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrant the denial of this request, I recommend that RZ 022024 be forwarded to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of denial.
I will second that.
There is a motion for denial made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor of recommendation of denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously, this matter will be forwarded to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of denial. Mr. Pennington, do you mind if we take about a 10 minute break? We will be in recess for about 10 minutes and resume at 20 minutes to 9:00. We have two short matters left.
Let's see, next item is Special Exemption 05-2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Excuse me. The applicant is requesting approval of a special exception permit for a 294-foot-tall lattice communication tower on parcel 61-A-55A. The tower will be located within 100 by 100 lease area on the 21.2-acre property. The property is zoned rural preservation and located on the north and east side of Passing Road, approximately 2,000 feet from the Essex County boundary. The collapsed zone for the tower is wholly contained within the subject property, and the 80 by 80 equipment compound surrounded by an eight-foot chain-link fence will house the tower and will be accessed via Passing Road. The Caroline County zoning ordinance standards for communication facilities, Item 12, allows for communication towers to exceed 199 feet with Board Supervisors' approval should five criteria be met. The tower shall generally support the county's policy of maintaining the county's rural and historic characteristics by not creating a visually adverse impact on residences other than a residence on the subject parcel, historic site, or scenic roadways. The applicant proposes screening and utilizing existing forested areas to assist with reducing the visual impact. The tower shall be located in areas designated in the zoning ordinance as rural agricultural preservation, where existing topographical features provide significant visual buffer between the tower and nearby residences and/or businesses located on adjacent or surrounding parcels. The proposed site is zoned rural preservation. It shall be demonstrated to the Board's satisfaction that the additional height will provide more effective coverage and more effectively meet the communication needs of the residents of Caroline County than 199-foot tower. However, at no time shall such a tower exceed a maximum height of 300 feet. The applicant has provided a letter from the Senior Engineer for Verizon Wireless noting the need for the additional height. It shall be demonstrated to the Board's satisfaction that the additional height will decrease the overall number of towers in the county. Verizon has provided documents that note several towers would be needed to, would be required to obtain the same coverage as the 290-foot tall, 294-foot-tall tower. Only those areas of the county designated as a permitted commercial tower development area as set forth in the Caroline County Communications Tower Master Plan prepared by Atlantic Technologies dated December 21, 2006, are eligible to have a maximum tower height in excess of 199 feet. This site is within a permitted commercial tower development area after, after evaluation, I'm sorry, and after evaluation, suggested condition number four will need to be reworded to state the tower shall commence construction within 24 months of the date of issuance of this special exception due to State Code Linkage. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, sir. And the items listed in blue on Page 2 under discussion, those would be the justifications for the increased height in the tower. Is that correct?
Yes, under A is the applicant's justification for the increase in the tower. B is verification that the site is zoned RP. C is the applicant provided a letter regarding the additional height and coverage. D is the applicant provided the letter requiring multiple towers should this tower not be built. And then E is staff confirming that it is part of the tower overlay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Pennington? Any discussion by the commissioners? Seems to be a pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, sir. Yes, sir. I apologize. I did not mean to overlook you. Please come forward if you would like.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Lori Schweller. I'm an attorney with Williams Mullen, representing Verizon Wireless. I do have a presentation for you if you would like to hear more information about the facility.
At your pleasure.
Thank you. I will try to be brief. This, Verizon Wireless has 23 wireless facilities in Caroline County, but most of those are along IA-95 and Route 301, and you need better service in the eastern part of the county. This was brought to our attention by the Rappahannock Tribe, who, who said that they needed better broadband, better broadband and wireless service. So what we're proposing is a site on Passing Road, as you can see here, zoned RP, it's 21 acres. Here's the site plan. You can see that it meets all the setbacks that are required. The tower would be designed to collapse within the subject parcel in the very unlikely case of that. It's outside of all the riparian preservation districts. You can see here that we would be using an existing road. Access easement would continue on to the 100 by 100-foot lease area. Within that, there would be an 80 by 80-foot compound, and there would be 33 Leland Cypress, Cypress planted around the compound to screen all of the equipment, the ground equipment and generator, that would keep the site going in the event of power failure. So we are requesting a 290-foot tower with four-foot lightning rod. And the good thing about this height, not only does it provide wide coverage, but it provides more colocation opportunities for other wireless providers in the area. As you heard from Mr. Pennington, this site would not have any impact on historic sites or scenic roadways based on our analysis for our federal and state review. It is located in a permitted commercial tower development area as set forth in your Communications Tower Master Plan. The additional height does increase coverage footprint as described by our radio frequency engineer, which can reduce the total number of towers needed by Verizon Wireless and would also reduce the number of towers needed by other carriers who could co-collocate on, on this site. Existing Verizon Wireless towers in the county are in the area of 250 to 350 in height, so this would be consistent with that and provide connectivity with those. We believe this proposal is consistent with your comprehensive plan for reasons already discussed, but also I wanted to note that there just are no existing towers in the area to be served. The closest ones are six and seven miles away, which is far outside the area of service. And the facility will not require any county resources such as utilities, roads, and schools. So that was my short presentation. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Just one quick question, if you please. I'm trying to place where on Passing Road this is in relation to Sparta Road. If you have a reference, or maybe Mr. Pennington, I don't know.
I don't know that I have a map in my presentation that can answer that question.
I see a gentleman coming forward. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Herbert Reynolds. I'm the landowner, and that property is approximately two miles from Sparta Road.
All right, two miles going in which direction?
Going towards 17 and Essex County.
Okay. And the reason I ask is I've got a little part-time job at Warrior's Heart, and there is zero phone service there. So hopefully that will boost that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good if you're good, Mr. Pennington. Okay. All right, Commissioners, any discussion? There being no discussion, is there a motion? Oh, wait a minute. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Final call. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this special exemption? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed. Now, Commissioners. Sir.
I'm trying to slow you down, but I wanted to clarify that before you make a motion, a revised condition number four was presented to you.
Yes, sir.
So I want to make sure that, that in any motion you make, you make clear that you're voting on the, the application as amended with the new condition four, which I'd be happy to read into the record if you'd like me to.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you keeping us on the straight and narrow. Commissioners, is there a motion?
I can make a motion. Whereas a special exemption request, 05-2024, appears to be the generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan for future land development, whereas a public necessity convenience general welfare and good zoning practice warrants for the approval of this request, I recommend that 05-2024 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval.
With, with that, that's.
Oh, with the, including the exceptions, the additions made by staff.
So that, just to clarify, that's condition number four is revised to read as follows. Construction shall commence for the tower within 24 months of approval of this special exception.
Yes, that plus the blue line. We have a blue line.
That's just explanatory.
Okay.
So it would just be the conditions as presented with this revision to number four.
I see what you're saying, the little handout that we got.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Motion by Dr. Orton, seconded by Mr. Williams.
Yeah. I did second it, but Jay didn't.
I, just, just to clarify, for the record, for the public, the reason that this was circulated is that there is a, a state statute that prohibits the original language, and so this is the language that's authorized under state statute. So the replacement condition number four, I think just for the record to make clear, is in order to ensure that the, all of the conditions comply with the governing law.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Dr. Orton, seconded by Mr. Williams and Mr. Young. Is there any further discussion? There being no further discussion. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pennington, and our condolences on the loss of your mother. Text Amendment 04-2024. I believe Mr. Williams is going to present this.
Mr. Robinson.
Robinson, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I've, I have lost my cheat sheet with everyone's names because in my old age, I tend to forget people's names.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. This is my first presentation before you all. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm going to present a text amendment, TXT 04-2024. Staff has brought forward this text amendment, which is proposing to increase the minimum parking space size in the zoning ordinance as well as travelway width. So currently in the zoning ordinance, the minimum parking space size is nine by 18. Because standard full-size trucks are approximately 20 feet, that causes overhang up to two feet into a travelway in commercial and residential developments. In order to maintain sufficient travelway for fire and rescue vehicles, staff has drafted this text amendment, which increases the standard minimum parking space size from nine by 18 to nine by 20. In addition to the parking space size, the text amendment would also increase the travelway width for residential developments such as townhomes and apartments. Currently requires a, the travelway width for residential developments such as townhomes and apartments currently requires a 26-foot width to accommodate fire and rescue vehicles, and a minimum 22-foot width in commercial developments. The text amendment would increase the travelway width in all developments to 26 feet. And as you can see in the memorandum, the proposed amendments would take place to Article 13 of the zoning ordinance, which is parking and loading requirements. That concludes the staff's presentation. I can attempt to answer questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Robinson? There is no applicant.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We appreciate it. Commissioners, any discussion?
You wouldn't need to hold a public hearing.
I, I want to go home. I'm sorry. That's why I'm in a rush, I guess. The public hearing regarding this text amendment is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Final call. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this text amendment? Please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed. All right, Commissioners, what be your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Whereas a public necessity convenience general welfare and good zoning practices warrant the approval of text 04-2024, I recommend that text 04-2024 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Is there any additional discussion regarding this matter? There being no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're getting down to the wire. Any and all matters? Mr. Penning.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any, any, any and all matters tonight.
Okay. While we are here, Commissioners, I would like to bring up one thing. And I'm not finding fault with anyone at all. We are repeatedly having a shortcoming in the presentation of our minutes. Historically, the minutes have been very sketchy. Within the past two minutes that we have had presented to us tonight, they are getting a bit better. I think it's very important that the Board of Supervisors have an understanding of what our discussions are, and to the best of some, of a transcriber's ability to transcribe what we say so that they have a full understanding of the flavor and our reasoning. To be presented to them with, well, the commission made a recommendation of approval or denial and by a vote, that lacks any reasoning behind it. The Board does not get our meetings or our minutes in a timely manner, I think. And here again, I'm not casting aspersions on anyone, but we've got to do a better job of having our minutes transcribed and approved at our following regular meetings while it's still all fresh in our minds while we know what's going on. Now, I don't know if it's going to take a, an addition to our bylaws or to our rules of order, but if there is something that we can do to assist, because I believe the minutes are transcribed by Mrs. Zech, if there is something, if they need help, then I think it would be incumbent upon us and in our best interest and the Board's best interest, if we either as a body or as an individual go to the Board and recommend that some assistance be given to the Planning Department. I haven't discussed this with Mr. Hughes, but it's just a shortcoming that I feel needs to be corrected. So any input or anything we can do to help the Planning Department along this matter, I'm willing to do. So those are my feelings.
So, Mr. Chair, just like, just like to clarify, so are you asking for verbatim minutes? Is that what you're asking for?
That would be lovely, but I think that it's really asking too much to go verbatim.
I would agree.
You would have to have a court stenographer sitting there with one of those little punch machines in order to do that. And I understand that the way that it is done now is that Mrs. Zech will listen to a portion of the video and try to type it and then go back and catch up. I have transcribed audio tapes myself in the past, and it is a difficult job to do verbatim. But I just feel that the Board needs to have a better understanding of where the Commissioners are coming from and what their thought process is. So if there's anything that we can do to assist or get some help, you know, we're perfectly willing to make that effort. And I'm not here trying to embarrass anyone at all or point out shortcomings, but these are documents that I think need to be done a little bit better.
So just for clarification, so you don't have any issue with the minutes coming to you in a timely manner? You just want more detail in the minutes that are presented?
I would like to, personally, I would like to have more detail. And to be quite honest with you, I think it would be fantastic if we could get them by the time our next regular meeting rolls around. Usually that's in a 30-day timeframe. So if that is possible, that would be great. It would be fantastic if there was a bit more meat to it, more substance.
Sure. And just for clarification.
So Supervisors have access to our minutes, right?
They do.
Yeah, because I've talked to my supervisor. And I think one thing that'd be helpful is make sure you touch base with your supervisor, which I imagine everyone here does, but planning commission, you know, at least every other month or so, you know, I know, I know I touch base with my supervisor. Do they receive our minutes before, concerning a certain item, before they vote on it?
They do. They receive their minutes in their packets. When each case goes forward, your minutes are included in their packet.
So they know why we voted on something?
They do.
I know they know how we voted, but, okay, so if they, all right, so they do receive that, okay. And I think too, yeah, it's our responsibility to touch base with them every so often.
Right. And if I'm not mistaken, I think there was only one meeting where your minutes were not included for the commission?
Uh, right now, we're two months behind.
So we just approved, March was, I mean, April was the last one we approved, right? So May, there was no meeting.
There wasn't a meeting in May.
And so, so just June.
So it's just June.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not speaking just to that timeframe, because there was, and I could go back and pull the records, but I think that there was one period where we were four months behind. And, you know, that's, we've got to do business a little bit better.
I understand. But with that said, I understand, we're operating with a very small staff that have multiple jobs, and that, that staff has been this size since 2008, so. So I will say, the, the good news is, is that we have, uh, staffed up, and so I don't think you will see any delay in the minutes going forward. But in the past, we had one individual doing about four different jobs, so, you know, she was doing the absolutely best that she could, and when times got busy, things.
She was wearing a lot of hats at one time, I know that.
Exactly right, so.
Absolutely, and like I say, th- this is not casting any aspersions or any blame or anything. To me, I'm seeing a deficiency that, what can we do to help relieve that deficiency? A- and we're certainly, if you need another staff member, by golly, we will go en masse to the board on your behalf.
Well, thank you. Well, we will certainly have that conversation internally and see if there's any assistance that you can provide us.
Okay, we'd be glad to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, we appreciate it. All right, commissioners, our business has concluded, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, adjourn and be back next month.
It's, uh, I'd have to pull my calendar out, so to our next regular meeting.
Our next regular meeting.
There's a motion.
Twenty-something.
Yeah, but there is a motion to adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM. Is there a second? Okay, motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Williams. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.